Good evening. Welcome to school meeting of Monday, March 8th. Now reading to the record pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, MGL Chapter 38 subsection 18 and Governor's order concerning imposing strict limitation of the number of people that may gather in one place. Meetings in town of Oxford will be conducted via remote participation to the greatest extent possible. We will strive to provide access to such meetings via a link or number to call in or other similar option. In the event we are unable to accommodate same despite best efforts, we will post recorded sessions of this meeting as soon as possible. No in-person attendance with members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings. For individuals who wish to participate remotely, please dial 1-646-558-8656 and enter PIN 836-2122-4551, or join the meeting via the link posted on the website and on this agenda with a pass code of 286-147. With that, I call the order of meeting. First up on our agenda is our student representative for report, Ashley McGowan. Are you present tonight, Ashley? Ashley's not with us yet? Okay, thank you. Our next item, I'll skip to the next item, will be a special presentation. Dr. Hendrickson, representing Student Services and Special Education with the Department update. Dr. Hendrickson, are you here?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Okay, um, I have a couple of, um, I'm here to provide you a status update with regards to special education and students returning full-time in person. As you remember, should remember, the last school committee meeting that I spoke at, we had already brought back our, our full, our high need students that were in, the most vulnerable students that were in a substantially separate program. From there, the, which was done in September, from there in November, I brought back what I called my two tier-two students. Those were students who were receiving additional support, adult support, as indicated on their IEPs, as well as those students who were in, were re, um, English language learners who had an access score of one to two on their access testing. In February, February 8th to be exact, I brought back another set group of cohort of students. Those were the students who had considered moderate needs, special needs on their IEP, and, um, they were brought back full in person, February 8th. That leads us, along with preschool, which initially was brought in during the September 28th group, to date, I have brought back 150 students of special needs, which we have 260 students of special needs in the district, so that is more than half of the students with special needs. The remaining students who have special needs are considered low needs, which maybe that they have two or less hours of services per week pull out and also require some inclusion time. I continue to work on that, and moving forward, that will be another priority of mine. With regards to, um, the educational stability audit, which I spoke of the last time I was present, um, we did receive our findings. The finding was that all documentation was submitted, it was complete, and the district has implemented in full and is in full compliance with regards to educational, the educational stability audit. Just to give you some information as to what the educational stability audit entailed, um, there were three major areas for the educational stability audit. The first area was designated staff, making sure that we had staff designated for the McInnes into homeless education, the foster care, a foster care designated individual as well as military. And our district military is not required, so therefore, that was not something that we needed to address. The second area was in training. The focus was on making sure that all of our staff are trained with regards to McInnes and with regards to foster care. So what happened there was I updated our annual training to include foster care students and the specifics of what their needs are required, and that is on the website and is the annual training at the beginning of the school year. The other area underneath training was to make sure that the district staff who supported the students also were provided training. The main focus was the person who was the contact person for the district, which is me, and so therefore, I did pursue training to ensure that we were in compliance in that area. The final area was for policies and procedures. For policies and procedures, as you may remember, at one of the school district, um, one of the school committee meetings, I presented some policies with regards to an updated McInnes policy, foster care policy, as well as a military policy. Those were all approved and are indefinitely in compliance from Dussie's perspective. Additionally, um, Nick and I spent some time and we updated the enrollment addition and admissions policy in order to ensure that we were compliant in that way as well, and that we revised, Nick revised very nicely, the website to ensure that individuals who were homeless or had students with foster who were in foster care in their home, did have the additional information that they needed to support it. So we're completely and totally in compliance, and generally, the audit is done every six years, so with a mid-cycle at through the three-year mark. So in three years, they will be coming to us again, and we will be readdressing at that point in time.
Thank you, Dr. Henderson, for the positive comments and feedback that we are in compliance. I'll open up to board members, questions, comments. Mr. Knackioli?
Thank you, Dr. Sue. The tier-two students that you indicated you brought back in November, and then the moderate needs in February, are they in both cohorts? I don't know if you guys classify as cohort D, but are they in cohort A, cohort B, they're in every day, both weeks, correct?
Yes, they are. You are correct. The first, when we first brought them back with regards to the, the tier-two, which I call in November, initially, we did not have them in both cohorts. Some, in some cases, they were, because they were partly working with a sub-separate teacher, because they were substantially separate part of the day, we were doing it via computer in the sub-separate classroom, but as restrictions backed off, and I spoke with Amy Grenette, we were able to put them in both cohorts, and definitely the last group in February are in cohort A and cohort B, as well as almost sub-separate as needed.
And of the 110 special ed students who did not return, how are they doing? Do you guys have any data? Like where are they at? I mean, I'm assuming you have kind of individuals' success plans or
Exactly.
Kind of a vision within each building? Okay.
Yes, we do. And, and for, and all along this whole school year, they have received all of their therapies, speech, OTPT, whether full in person or whether, whether at home. We do have some of those students who are truly high and moderate needs. The parents have opted to keep them home remotely, and we address, we do provide all those services in the remote learning environment. So we are addressing it all.
Yeah, thank you. A couple of quick, quick other ones. Of, of looking at students, I'm sure maybe principals brought it to you, or you guys had discussions at admin meetings, was there a level of student who necessarily didn't qualify for an IEP, but was having some social, emotional, kind of educational regression and struggles? Did any of that population get looked at, brought back in? Were there any discussions? If you could just talk to us a little bit about that?
Sure, yes. When it came to students who are regular education, um, the principals, Dr. Nash had made it so that the principals could make those decisions on, in their building, because it is their building on their own as regular education students. Many of the students that were failing or were socially emotionally having challenges were also brought back.
Oh, so that was happening in the four buildings?
Yes.
Oh, excellent.
That's February, since the February, for the February, since February, we did that with the February group. When we started, they started looking at grades. So the principals could make their decision independent of me. My focus was on the, the special populations, special education, McInnes, foster care, ELL.
Thank you.
We had
Dr. Nash?
We just had a discussion probably a few months ago with respect to at-risk kids in general, and the questions about whether or not you should bring them back. My response was, of course, if you and your team and your building have identified a student regardless of who they are, and you feel that they should be back and you have the space, you bring them back. So we brought back students on 504s and other students who had, I know in some discussions, principals were talking with me about it, and absolutely, absolutely.
Hold on, support, very good.
Yeah.
One more quick.
Yes, Mr. Knackioli, slow before.
Compensatory services, Dr. Sue, is that, how have those conversations been going, and how are the teams handling those? And what does the summer kind of look like, if you can share anything at this point?
Sure, that was something that I was going to discuss as well. Um, with regard to compensatory services, it's something that is discussed at the students' IEP meeting. At the end of the meeting, we discuss with the parent any concerns that they may have. We look at what we've provided, for the most part with Oxford, therapy service, speech, OTPT, all of those services have been happening since March. Whether they be remote or in-person, hybrid, whatever, they have been happening. So, um, we have been, um, we have a great team that's been able to address a lot of the, the therapies and the supports, the need to be held academically. We've also had some students walk in to be provided, um, those, the types of student services with regards to even pull out with like, say, reading or something of that nature. For the summer, I'm looking at it as we need to make sure that our summer program meets the needs of those students, meaning that it, you, our program has been three days a week for five weeks, two and a half hours a day. For our sub-separate population, it's been four hours a day for those three days. Uh, and we are having discussions about what that needs to look like for the summer. It clearly, definitely, we need to make sure that we're meeting the needs of those students, and that it may be a four-day-a-week program. We have not had those, those solid discussions yet, but we have been tossing ideas around as to how to meet the needs of the students.
Thank you very much, Dr. Sue, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Knackioli. Anyone else? Questions? Mrs. Forbes, go ahead.
I just had a follow-up question to Dave's question regarding the 110 lower-needs students. I'm assuming that a portion of those would fall under the K through four?
Yes, they will. Yes, a majority of them will.
Okay, great. So a majority of those students should be back in school sooner than, all right, great. Thank you.
Um, I also want to state that preschool, just for the community as well, we are opening up the preschool a little bit more, and we do have students that are coming in as we do child find and do our evaluations. There are more students that are going to need to be in person, and our preschool has been full in-person Monday through Thursday. But what I'm saying is, is that any parent that is interested in having their child come as a peer partner, we, we would definitely welcome that, and if you could call our office, we will make sure to do the screening that we need to do to get your child in even now.
Very good point. Well, thank you. Nothing further. All right. Move on, next order of business. Next being the minutes of the meetings from February 22nd and March 1st. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of February 22, 2021, and March 1, 2021. A motion to have a second?
Second.
Moved in second, discussion. All who are fair, please say aye.
Aye.
However, record show, vowing affirmative, both minutes meetings are passed. Next point is tonight, and, um, Mr. Knackioli, you're on the agenda for Policy Committee. You need to get the local wellness.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So the Policy Committee met last week. I stepped in for the chair as a pal. The chair could not be there. So basically, we looked at our local wellness policy. We took MASAC's template, took a couple other kind of towns around us, and kind of, I want to say streamlined ours a little bit. We really kind of just took it, and we organized it a little bit, just a little bit more user-friendly in my opinion. So we have a general policy statement, the makeup of the Wellness Committee, nutrition guidelines. And again, some of this was in our current policy, but we just kind of put it a little bit more in an organized fashion. Nutrition and physical education, the breakdown of nutrition education, physical education activities, other school-based activities in the evaluation process, and then cited some legal references and cross-references. So, um, it was a productive meeting. There was four of us in person, or five of us, and a couple of remotes, so thought it went well. I don't know if this wants to be the first read, Mr. Chair. I don't know what the next steps are. I don't know if you've looked it over, or the committee's had a chance to look it over. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Knackioli. This time I entertain a motion to approve with a waiver of second reading the ADF local wellness policy. That was written and presented tonight by Mr. Knackioli, and including the omissions of the script, of the crossouts from the previous one, with our new policy being, being labeled ADF. A motion to have a second?
Second.
Moving in second, a discussion. No, I just want to congratulate this committee. Every time I look at their work, and I thank the volunteers and the many, many hours, that these meetings can get tedious, they can get into word snippets, and if you're looking for intentions, and then also outcomes, and you're trying to play sometimes devil's advocate if a situation comes up, how will you handle it? So my applause to that committee. I know Mrs. Griffin does it. She does a great job with this. As Mr. Knackioli, you have a great team with that. There you go. And that's why we opened, opened this up for a while. This is one of those areas of people looking to get involved in this policy subcommittee, learn what goes on in the committee, the behind-the-scenes work, but also you make really hard decisions when it comes to us as a committee, as well as the schools, on what our governing, on how we govern. So this is really behind-the-scenes excellent work. Thank you.
We are blessed to have such an excellent group of volunteers. It's unbelievable. Very invested people that have been there for several, several years too, which is outstanding.
Very dedicated, yes.
Yeah.
I had a motion, second, is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Roll call vote, Mr. Knackioli?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Also vote yes as well, vowing affirmative. Policy ADF is now in. Okay. Mr. Burke, you are next up. Do you have an update from the Superintendent Selection Committee tonight?
I do, Mr. Chairman. The selection committee met for the first time this past week, where Dr. Collins provided a training for the committee, talked about process, talked about confidentiality, and then we were given the candidates to review. So we've begun reviewing the candidates on our own. We are meeting again tomorrow night to narrow down that, those candidates to a pool of candidates that we would like to do a first round of interviews with, and then we'll move on from there.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Let's move forward, that's exciting. Okay, next on the agenda, I'll call forward, um, our business manager, Mr. Ladue, and also do we have present Mr. Kevin Hinkamp, President of Vanpool Transportation Pay, President of Vanpool. Mr. Hinkamp, are you here?
Yes, I am, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for joining us this evening. Okay, in our, in our packets, we have a letter of requests for the MO, request for proposed MOA with Vanpool. We do have a lot of background information, and I guess at this stage, Mr. Hinkamp, I'll give you the floor to explain, to, I guess, to go over your proposal with us of what you're looking for in, in this MOA, and why you feel will be in the best means for the Oxford Public School Committee to, to sign on with you.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Kevin Hinkamp. I'm the President of Vanpool Transportation. Thanks for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. I did put forward a letter with some additional information that I, I believe that you would have in front of you, but before we get started, I'll begin by extending my appreciation and our company's appreciation for the support that you've shown us, not just during the duration of our contract, but specifically last spring, when you extended the support under a memorandum of agreement during a very challenging time. I would say as a, as a result of that agreement that we made, our company was ready to deliver services when needed this, this fall. We provide four in-district special education vans and 15 out-of-district routes. That's what we did pre-COVID. My understanding now is we're still providing those four in-district vans and also 13 out-of-district routes. And so why that's important is between, you know, pre-COVID and today, the services we're providing is quite, quite similar to what we provided pre-COVID. So with the four in-district vans and the 13 out-of-district routes, what's missing this year are the services not required on the remote learning days. And that's roughly about 25% of the service that we would typically provide. And so similar to last year in the memorandum of agreement that we had, we put forward a request for a payment of 78% on the remote days. And we shortened the time periods down from what we saw last spring to make it a little bit more reasonable in case there was a long-term shutdown. We limited that to basically two weeks or the next pay period. And so at the end of the day, what our request is, is for 78% payment on the remote days. Um, and I think that's, I think that's the summary of what our request is at this time. I'd be glad to answer any questions. Again, it's been very much appreciated, and, and I believe we've been able to continue providing all the services that's been requested of us.
Thank you, Mr. Hinkamp. Thank you for providing that breakdown for us. I'll open up, I do have questions. I'll open up to members of the board. Mr. Knackioli, go ahead.
Yes, thanks for the, for the details. I'm also a principal of another district, so sometimes there's lots of different interpretation of what remote
Yes.
days mean. So what is your interpretation of remote days in this language?
Well, part of the agreement will start off with the shortening of the school year, the 10 days. Earlier in the fall, in speaking to Mr. Ladue, we agreed that we would not be requesting, I know the, the school district did professional days, so that's not part of what we're asking for, but if we had a program with a student that would typically be going in attendance all five days per week, we would say a remote day is the day that we wouldn't be providing services to that student.
So, yeah, so a student, so you're saying a student that you would transport five days a week normally?
Yes.
But then you didn't transport them one day that week? That would be considered a remote day?
Yes. And, and in the bills we put forward, we identified the days when a child, when we would consider them to be remote and would work with the district to make sure that that, in the programs, that that was correct. So we have a listing of each of the vans and each of the, the routes, and we would identify the days as transportation days and then non-transportation days on the bill.
Okay, so if we were, could I just ask a follow-up? If we were in a pre-COVID year?
Yes.
You had one student you were transporting to Marlboro, five days a week. You don't transfer her, you don't transport that person one day out of that week. Do we still pay for that day?
If the, if pre-COVID, if the student was sick, or some type of an example like that, you'd pay for that student, yes. If that student, if the district, and, you know, if we were in communication with the district and we understood that there was going to be a long-term absence, we would not bill for that.
Okay.
So if we had someone who was having surgery in a single van, we would notify them, and typically you wouldn't pay for that six or five weeks, but if it's just a regular illness, you pay.
Yeah. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I have, I do have a couple of questions for you, and thank you, Mr. Knackioli, for those. It kind of goes off this, because as you know, you were on the agenda previously with our bus company was looking for a same type of agreement.
Yes.
We have not entered into that agreement nor discussions with the bus company. In, previous to that, including last year, we didn't negotiate with the bus company in what would we be getting in return for our payment. So I'll ask you the same question for paying that 78% on the non, when we're not transporting a student, what does the Oxford Public Schools get in return for that?
Well, the, the first answer I would give is the readiness available to transport the student again the next day or the next series of days. I think that would be both applicable to last spring and again this year. With the schedules and the requirements that we have, we need to be ready, and the van and the driver and the office all need to be ready on the day whether that child goes to school or not. So that's what I would say first. Inside of that, of the 78%, is of course, the driver would continue to be compensated, and the company would continue to provide, you know, all of the services and the infrastructure behind delivering the service on the day that goes. And so those things would, would include all of the training, all of the insurance, all of the other requirements that do not get billed on a daily basis.
I understand. I understand what you're asking, and I, my personal feelings are, is we are not in the, in the business. We, we have transparency to our taxpayers, and our taxpayers are asked for the service, what was provided. For example, last fall, you, under the governor's orders, we still honored our agreement. We did not honor such agreement with our coaches, with many of our advisors, the people that could not perform the positions that they're contracted for. I know you, you requested to be put on the agenda to speak with this. I'm not sure how other board members feel, but I feel this, that this is really, that you're looking towards your own company operations. With the drivers, and then when I, when looking at the government and federal programs, there's money out there that is available because, for extreme COVID relief. I don't believe that this committee, the town of Oxford, under our budget, should be providing any type of stimulus-type packages out there. It really sets us up for bad precedents, that anyone that doesn't perform the service, yourself, the bus companies, coaches, advisors, turn around and say, well, you set precedence tonight, is that you'll enter into an agreement with Vanpool. So I, so I personally will not be voting in favor of this. There is no motion on the floor, but I do want to have, give you the opportunity to be heard and to respond. And I'll, I'll let you, you can respond, and I know board members on how, how they feel on this action.
Well, if, if I may, if I'm able to respond, I can, I will respond by saying I understand. It's, it's a field of service that I've been in for 18 years. My wife has, is a retired school teacher. My daughter is a school teacher. We've shared these conversations quite often over the past year. I would say that, again, the circumstances within the district or with the personnel in the district, we did take that into account when we drafted the MOA to make sure that it was limited in nature, unlike it was last year where it just extended on, and that we, as a company, have done what I think is all that is possible to address it on, on our end. We were not eligible for any other type of stimulus money other than the employee retention credit, which allows us 50% discount on an employee wage if we pay an employee if they were not working. That is the only one that we were eligible for. We did not participate in any other benefit program like the PPP loan. We weren't eligible for those. So I think we did the best we could to work with all of our school districts. Again, many were very supportive. There are some that are challenged, and we continue to work with them. So I do respect the comments that were made and would be open to any other questions, and hopefully I've, I've responded to your points and your questions as well.
Thank you. Yes, and I think you run a reputable, reputable company. I believe that you service our students very well, but I just don't feel that our tax, that our tax dollars should be spent on a service that is not being provided. Okay, anyone else, anything else? September, go ahead.
Just a point of clarification, please. Did you say that your drivers are paid for the days that they're not transporting our students?
Yes.
And they're paid 100% of their wage for the day?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is
Go ahead.
Is that because they're doing other runs, or they're not doing?
Is that because they're doing other runs or they're not doing any runs that day at all?
I think, I, I don't know the answer, that level of detail. I could try to find that out, but I, I don't know.
Yeah, because I would, it'd be interesting to know if they were fully paid and they're not working and they're, they're, you know, obviously not on the clock. As opposed to they're being put on other runs in other places and then obviously. I would expect an employer to pay in that circumstance because they're, they're working for you.
Yep.
Um, yeah.
Yeah, we've tried, we, we, because of the. Complexity of the routing and the remote days or the cohort days. Um, we've tried to do that on a quarterly basis. Um, it's, as you can expect, it's a bit challenging, but I understand your point.
Yeah.
I just wanted to play. I think there is a number five, I think may capture that in the uh. MOA you brought forward. Vanpool slash RNT agrees that safety, safety training and professional development for employees will be, will continue as needed during the school closure period. As well as maintenance inspections and general upkeep of all vehicles. I'm assuming that's part of what they would be doing if they weren't driving, safety trainings, professional development.
Yes, we've maintained all of the trainings and, and actually, um, we've actually done quite a bit more of it than we had done in the past.
No, just comment. Uh, I think, Mr. Chair, going to your comments also, I think this is a difficult one, right? I kind of agree that it's tough to uh, pay for a service that wasn't provided, but I also. I, I think there's such thing as good faith here in a company that has worked with us for a while and has provided some. Uh, quality service for us and in something that is unprecedented, such as the pandemic that we're going through here. You know, I understand that they have their employees that they've got to support. Um, I, I would say. Had I been on the board at the time when all this started, I, I would have voted to pay our coaches what we had already budgeted for them, but. That's uh, water under the bridge at this point. Um, so I, I certainly respect your comments about it. It is tough for, for us as a, as a school board to approve paying for something that. Didn't actually benefit us. Um, but I, I do want to respect that this company has done a good job for us and it's a tough decision.
Yes, it really, it really is. You know, it's nothing personal, nothing against the business. It's just, it's that we have our business run here as well too. Do I have a, okay, um, any further comments? Do I have a motion on the floor? Is everyone willing to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm willing to make a motion that we, is it to accept the MOA? Is that what we're doing, Justin?
Yes, to accept the MOA that Vanpool has put forward. Let me just, um, also. Part of that, uh. Just to be clear, this MOA is uh, looking for seventy-eight percent of our, our normal daily rate. And then in the event of a, we'll say a long-term closure, say more than two weeks, that would go down to fifty percent.
Can you also give the, I know the board um, a sense of the funding mechanism?
Yeah, so we, we did currently budget a hundred percent for the entire school year this year. As. Last March when we set our budget, we didn't know, obviously this stuff would happen. Um. The other part to this agreement is there's additional cleaning costs that have been added. Um, that's five fifty per day for the in-district vans and then two dollars for the added district vans. Um, the reason why I bring that up is uh, when we talk about services not rendered, those services have been rendered. Um, as part of our current agreement with Vanpool, um, there was a, a spot in there that says, you know, should uh, federal state guidelines change and. Then we would be open to, to negotiate. And I think that this, this is. Fits perfectly for that. It's, it's appropriate to say, well, geez, you know, nobody foresaw this happening. Uh, we acknowledge that there are additional. Cleaning costs associated uh, with running transportation. So I, I do feel as though it would be fair to at least acknowledge the, the cleaning costs. Again, that's a. Five dollar, five fifty per day for the in-district and two dollars for the added district. Um, to date. I do want to uh, just mention the cleaning cost, uh. If we were to pay, we owe four thousand two hundred and five dollars. That's through January for the cleaning costs. For the non-transportation days, I'll call it. Uh, currently, and this is through January, fifty thousand three hundred thirteen dollars and sixty cents. And again, we, we did budget for one hundred percent this year for every day as though nothing would have changed. So we do have funding available.
Thank you.
Mr. Burke, Mr. Burke, you still had a motion on the floor?
So I was, yeah, I'm gonna make a motion when we discuss, right? So I'll, I'll make a motion to accept the MOA with Vanpool Transportation.
The MOA of Vanpool Transportation would resulting in the seventy-eight, would that be resulting in the seventy-eight percent? For non-transportation days? And the five fifty and the ten dollars per district cleaning charge? Are those, are those contained within the motion?
In the MOA?
Yeah.
Yes.
I don't think that's the entirety of the MOA.
I'm sorry?
I don't think that's the entirety of the MOA, but.
No, but that's the inclusion of those values.
Those are included in the MOA.
Okay. I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second? Move in second. Any further discussion? Mr. Cacchioli, go ahead.
Couple things. So. Do we have any outstanding um. Non-paid days to date? So do we owe Vanpool any money prior to tonight? Or did the prior agreement that I see the chair signed last year, are we all up to date with Vanpool right now?
Yes, to the best of my knowledge. Any invoice that we have received uh, with services we're providing, we did pay those.
So we're talking about moving forward for the remainder of this school year. If there is any sort of COVID closure, where we're temporarily closing a school. That we will pay them seventy-eight percent per day and if it gets to two weeks, it's down to fifty percent. Is that what I'm hearing correctly?
That's in district and out of district.
In district and out of district, correct?
I believe this, this agreement would uh, apply retroactively to the beginning of this school year. It wouldn't be from.
So that's what I'm asking. Do we have any days prior, at the start of this school year?
Mm-hmm.
Are there any non-paid days that we haven't paid Vanpool?
Yes.
That would fall into this category?
Yes.
For the number of fifty thousand three hundred thirteen dollars and sixty cents.
Oh, that's, that's.
Right, that, that would cover back to the beginning of the school year for us.
Transportation days.
Where are you seeing this number, Mr. Chair?
I just provided it. I had totaled up the invoices prior to the meeting to give the committee an idea of what, what. We would owe from the beginning of the school year for non-transportation days.
That's what I was just asking. So there is money, there's fifty-five thousand dollars that we owe prior to us agreeing on this, right? It's gonna go retroactive as well.
Correct, correct.
And those were from what days? I mean, do we have all that logged out somewhere? We were out that many days?
Well, the added district, many of those schools were working on one day, two days. They were all over the place, but yes. They went down and, and pulled it out by each of the added district placements and the number of days that they were operating back to. Was it October or September? Because some of them.
This goes back to September.
September. Some of them started in September, even though we didn't start here until. Two weeks after the first two weeks in October, I think October, yeah. Trying to think back what the date was when we started. We had two weeks of a remote, so it would have been the twenty-second, I think, when we started.
So, Justin, to save the seg. That based upon these numbers now, this being March the eighth. That our total, that, that this bill may come to. By the end of the year, I don't know if these programs run for the summer or anything like that.
Mm-hmm.
Somewhere close to eighty thousand dollars.
I'd say that's fair to say.
A forecasted amount.
For non-transportation days.
Right.
Uh, that's close. Yeah. And again, it's contingent upon the schedules for the added district and, and our schedule.
Based upon where we are and what the school year will be.
Yeah, I'd say that's fair. That's close.
To forecast that, okay.
So we'll take some of them off when of course, we bring our students back, but then we still have our added districts, so.
Yes, okay.
All right. And just to be clear, what you said earlier, that money even going to the end of the year has already been budgeted for?
Already in our budget.
Correct. We budgeted last year for a hundred percent full in, in person.
And, and we budgeted for a hundred and eighty days.
Okay.
Instead of a hundred and seventy, so.
Okay.
And that's where the PPE money will come from? Because you didn't budget for that, I'm assuming.
Uh, for the additional cleaning and PPE, uh, you'd probably make it up if you're only paying seventy, seventy-eight percent that there should be. Money's available, because you're not paying the full one hundred percent. Again, through today, it's about four thousand dollars, so.
Four thousand dollars?
Four thousand, that's.
That we owe today on PPE?
Yes, for the PP including.
Motion, move second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, Mr. Cacchioli.
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
No.
Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
And although, no as well, motion passes, three affirming, two against. And so, so Mr. Laduke. Uh, and Mr. Hank Camper will be getting together. And you can figure out on how the pass is. Okay.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I do have uh, one more item for the committee this evening. This is the submission of a town meeting article. I want to say roughly two years ago, um, Title Four E. Now allows for reimbursement for uh, foster transportation. I was pursuing that this past year and I had found that we need town meeting authorization to enter into a contract with uh, DCF. Um, the Office of Health and Human Services and DESI, uh, in order for us to pursue the, the reimbursement for foster transportation. Um, so that's the warrant article I had brought before you for your approval, um, is to, is to seek this town meeting authorization. Uh, just a little bit more info on that. The. The statute on this actually allows for this reimbursement to be applied directly back to uh, foster transportation. So there wouldn't be any further appropriation through town meeting or anything like that. Upon adoption or the, the town meeting approves this, it would then authorize the superintendent to sign the agreement. And just apply those reimbursements directly back to foster transportation. So I think that's a, that's a good thing to seek the reimbursement because it would uh, obviously. Be used as an offset for our budget for any foster uh, transportation. It's not a lot of money. But it, it's a few thousand per year, I, I estimate. And it's all depending on how much foster transportation you provide. So. Well, you provide more reimbursement, not saying that that's really what you want to start doing, but at least this would uh, give us authorization.
Thank you. I entertain a motion to approve this, the proposed warrant article. I'll read it to the record. Chief of Town will vote to authorize the Superintendent of Schools, the Oxford Public Schools, with the approval of the Oxford Board of Selectment to enter into contracts. With the Department of Children and Families, the Executive Office of Health and Human Services, and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. In order to obtain federal Title Four E reimbursed, reimbursements for foster care transportation. And to provide that payment for such foster care transportation under such contracts. May be made from such reimbursements as a result of the foster care transportation being performed without appropriation of said reimbursements. Pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty-four, Section Seventy, or take any other action relative thereto. And this will be submitted and sponsored by the Oxford School Committee. I didn't, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, do I have a discussion? Mr. Cacchioli?
Yeah, this is totally my ELA teacher coming out of me, but Superintendent of Schools of the Oxford Public Schools, does it need to be that redundant? Or can we just say Superintendent of the Oxford Public Schools? Again, I told you, I prefaced my comment by saying it's the ELA teacher in me. It's Superintendent of Schools of the Oxford Public Schools. Would be the Superintendent of the Oxford Public Schools?
Yeah.
Right, um, thank you. And being a former selectman, I know that every warrant article goes in front of council. For, for wording, it has to be approved and has it, and they have the right to adjust that wording. So we can change that tonight? Superintendent of. Mr. Mr. Cacchioli, do you want to make an amendment to this?
Yeah, uh, I would just like to make an amendment to just, to authorize the Superintendent of the Oxford Public Schools, just straight of schools.
That's been noted, yes, Mr. Forbes.
Um, just one question for you, Justin. Do I understand correctly that if we are, we have a foster child here in our system. Who is moved to a new foster home for continuity of education, we did agree that. Or we are required to continue to provide transportation to and from the new home, even if it's out of town. Is that correct?
Yes, I'm just trying to follow your question.
That is correct. I'm sorry, that is correct. September, generally, um. In many cases, it ends up being that we work with the other district. As far as some, at times, uh, just like with McKinney-Vento, we've been able to, to cost share it.
Okay, thank you. I thought we had discussed that at our previous meeting. I just wanted to be sure that we are still obligated, if. That might not be the right word, but that we would still be doing that for the student. Which we will. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sue.
Any further discussion? Call for the vote, roll call vote. Mr. Cacchioli?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Griffin?
Yes.
Mrs. Forbes?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan votes yes as well, following the affirmative, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for, from your business?
That's all for this evening. Thank you.
Very good, thank you, sir. Dr. Nash, your report's.
So I have a, a rather lengthy report this evening. I'll try to make it brief and homogenize it, but all of it uh, ties back to. The first topic, which is the Commissioner's uh, regulatory changes that occurred on Friday. At the Board of Education meeting, uh, where the board voted, voted eight to three. Uh, to return all students in K-five, uh, to, the elementary students, uh, to school effective uh, April fifth. This is uh, full-time, in-person, five days a week. Uh, along with that, districts will be required to provide options for any students and any families who wish to stay remote. Through the end of this year. However, there will be no choice for remote next fall. The Commissioner was very clear on that, unless something happens. Obviously with the pandemic, uh, it will not be an option, but it will be an option for parents to complete this year remote. We will need to send something because our middle school is a five-seven school. I anticipate that this week. The Commissioner will be indicating that school districts with that configuration will need to send something uh, to them. Uh, that we would be starting April fifth with our K-four students. Uh, there is uh, some question as to whether or not. Uh, secondary schools will start before the end of the school year. We do not have an answer yet. Uh, the Commissioner did indicate that he would expect, or he hoped. That uh, next up would be middle school and then possibly high school, and he hasn't really changed. But again, we may have a better indication of that uh, by the end of this week. Or after the elementary schools get back and we begin to see what it looks like when you have all students back, uh, full-time in person. We must continue to meet, however, the learning hours, which had been amended. Based on the fact that the school year changed from a hundred and eighty days to a hundred and seventy days. So just as a reminder. The high school, uh, high school or secondary hours, I should say, not high school. Secondary hours in a typical school year are nine hundred and ninety. Those were amended down to nine hundred and thirty-five. And at the elementary level, uh, they are nine hundred and those were amended to eight hundred and fifty. And I know that there's always a question out there because in our district, as you know. We have a day on Friday that is a uh, remote day, uh, partial synchronous and then asynchronous. And that would not count uh, for our learning hours. So we would need to be in school five days a week. To meet the minimum five hours a day, which if you divide eight hundred and fifty by one hundred and seventy, that's what you get. So I think that's the difficulty, uh, you know, getting used to uh, changing again, uh, as we all know. Uh, more information is coming this week with respect to lunch and distancing. Uh, he promises, so we'll stay tuned to that. I have provided, uh, I had met with the unions uh, prior to this because we were told by the Commissioner. That he was going to move forward with this. Uh, we weren't sure at that point in time. Whether, when it would be. He did not have a date set for that meeting. And so in anticipation of that, I did meet with the union stewards and the OEA president just to get them in the loop. And then formally today, I sent them an email, uh, offering them the opportunity to sit down. And uh, just have set up some meetings to discuss the impact of this change. And so certainly for those members of our committee who are part of that bargaining subcommittee, um, I will uh, get back to you once I see. I do have, where we will go with this. I do have a preliminary meeting this week, I believe, with the OEA. Um, to begin some discussions, but at the point in time when I met with them, it was all really just in the works. Uh, we didn't know what the vote would be. We have started our reentry plan. You have in your packet, that timeline. We started it actually two weeks ago. We started it actually two weeks ago, and we have really done some work. The principals, particularly at the elementary level, have done some planning. As of today, our parents' K-4 received their choice questionnaire due back on Wednesday. Tomorrow at 5:00 PM, the elementary principals will hold a Q and A, virtual Q and A, for any parent to answer any questions that they might have about what reentry would look like. And then we have a very short window, a turnaround, for our parents to return their survey. The options are two. One, to return your child full-time in-person, five days a week, or to elect to stay remote for the rest of the school year. So I know that there will be some questions, and I think the principals anticipate trying to do that. We've also, as the entry timeline shows you, we have a series of meetings that have been set up regarding lunch, pool testing, facilities, schedule, and what that might look like. So all of this is in the works at this point in time. Any questions that you might have on the Commissioner's changes or what at this time
The question to the timeline you were referring to? Like, is it in here?
Yeah, it's near the very end. Mr. C, it looks?
I got it, I see it.
Okay. It's a six-week kind of window?
Yeah, thank you.
For the elementary. And it's probably already been revised a little bit, honestly, when we're doing this. We had to move some meetings back and some ahead based on when we were trying to get surveys out to parents. So I would just urge the K-4 elementary parents to jump into the Q and A tomorrow at 5:00. If you have questions for either Mr. P or Mr. Quinn with respect to returning and what it might look like, and then to fill out your survey or your questionnaire, your choice, I should say, and get it into us on Wednesday so that we can, the principals can start planning to look at what schedules and classes will look like. So I'll start at that and move on to the next topic unless there are questions.
Questions? Please continue.
Okay. I also should have on, I think remotely with us, our head nurse, Amy Grenette. Amy, are you?
Mrs. Grenette, are you here?
Hi, yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Welcome.
Thank you.
First, let me say that honestly, we had lots of discussions. The head nurse, I, and Kathy Schomer, way back when pool testing came out, certainly as a mitigation strategy. And there were some challenges with implementing it that have changed. One of the biggest challenges was keeping students and staff out in a pool who came back, that came back positive and trying to then do some type of antigen testing really that might have been off-site or encouraging them. All of that has changed. And when that changed, it kind of changed coincidentally with a discussion that was coming on about bringing students back. And so when you can add another mitigation strategy, the potential of another mitigation strategy on top of the ones that you are currently using, and it can be paid for not only by the state of Massachusetts, at least through April 5th, April 18th, but we also know that the state of Massachusetts has also given us additional monies that must be spent between now and June, it seemed like a no-brainer. I can tell you that, as you have seen in the recent survey that we put out, initially we were unsure as to what it might look like. But let me give you some big picture explanations of pool testing, more for the people who might be watching, and then I'll turn it over to Amy to talk a little bit about our thinking about the logistics and how we have started to look at the process and how we might implement it. So if you turn to page five in the January 22 memo that you have, about two-thirds down to the bottom of the page, you'll see the basic overview of pool testing. The information before that really is more probably relevant to Amy and I with respect to how the operational things that needed to be done in order to get to this point. First of all, pool testing is voluntary. It is open to all students and all staff. We'll be starting pre-K 4. Any student who is in grade two and up can self-administer, but any student in pre-K through 1, the anterior nasal swabbing will be done by our nurses. At this point in time, we anticipate that our head nurse and the nurse in the building will be able to do that. We'll be working through the logistics of that. We have a meeting actually tomorrow on pool testing, and we'll have a meeting with our principals to go over the big picture, and then they can kind of take that and fine-tune it so we can make sure that we can hit all of the classrooms and do it appropriately. Pool testing is where the samples, up to 10, are batched together in a pool. Students, as I said to you, in grades two and up can self-administer this. It is, the results come back to us within 24 to 48 hours, and then a pool that tests is positive, then will undergo the Abbott Binex Now antigen testing that we conduct right here on site, and we'll have the results within 15 minutes, I believe. And at that point in time, we would then move into contact tracing as we typically do now. We anticipate that our nurses will administer it, they will be trained. There are videos that are child-appropriate that you can use to teach a second or third grader how to do this. Again, I repeat, it's voluntary, there is no cost. The reporting is anonymous in that we do not send in a student's name. It is done in a platform through Project Beacon via Abbott Binex Now and CIC Health that we're working with. Our pools will be picked up. We anticipate doing this on a Monday, pool testing on a Monday, to get the results no later than Wednesday. And that way, if we had a look back, it would only be two days instead of four days in school. Amy, you want to jump in and talk a little bit about the logistics?
Sure, thank you. So right now, we're still in the preliminary planning. We had a meeting last week and really, you know, tried to sort out the details and what we'd like it to look like, how we'd like to roll that out. And tomorrow, we'll be meeting with the principals. So I've met with the nurses and, you know, we're, we talk about it often, and there's a lot of, you know, things that go into it as far as different software platforms and consent. And so there's a lot that has to happen before the actual pool testing can occur. We are aiming for a trial date of March 22nd or March 29th, depending on, you know, we're really, you know, our hands are tied as quick as, in terms of how quick it can happen with, you know, Project Beacon and the consent and all that. But I think really just one week of trial would be a, would be easy enough for us to work out the kinks. Like Dr. Nash had mentioned, some people get concerned thinking, how is a second grader going to administer? And there, it's really quite simple, and it's not, I mean, when we think about how nasal swabs were, you know, six months to a year ago, you know, that, I think that really makes people nervous. Now, it's to the point where it's almost ticklish rather than uncomfortable. So we have a video from a second grader, you know, how to, you know, test for COVID by a second grader. And so it's really all about, we're going to go to school to school, so I'll be at most likely Barton in the morning, first thing in the morning. This is how I would like it to play out. First thing in the morning, and then, you know, we'll go through those students there and then go to Chafee and go through those students there. Chafee, because it's pre-K to first grade, we will be administering the swab, so that might take a little bit more time, well, that will take more time. So between the two nurses and if they're, you know, we're going to look at if we need more hands on board, what, you know, what staff in the building could help with that. Like Dr. Nash said, it's voluntary, it's just another added layer of mitigation strategy. It's to help people feel more comfortable coming back to school, staff included. As far as the courier picks up on the last day, on the, you know, that last, on Monday, say 2:30, and we have that, those results by Wednesday morning, you know, that's something that we could test right away. So there's a few different consents. There's the consent to do the pool testing, there's the consent to do the follow-up reflex testing. So then we would have, okay, the other students that were negative, that were not deemed exposed, can go back to school and just the positive student would have to go home and isolate. Ideally, what we would like, and the nurses and I discussed this on Friday, if there was a positive pool, you know, and we found a positive student, if they have siblings in the other schools, we do have access to the Binex Now to test the siblings. So it could be something that could prevent some spread in other schools as well. Let me see, I think, is there any other questions besides, well, a couple things. So there's some communication that is for the parents. We'll have that letter that had gone out. We'll have a Q and A, so I will, you know, be there, and I think we just have to figure out that day tomorrow, you know, finalize that. But the nurses and I plan to do a Q and A for any parent, staff, anyone that had questions and is just looking for some clarification, because I think there might be between when these guidelines first came out in January and how they are now, it's definitely more palatable to do this now, given that we're going to have these kids in school full-time. Also, we're going to send home fact sheets, just simple, you know, question and answers, and we're going to do demos for the students.
Amy, I have a question for you. Is it, will it be opt-in or opt-out with the student making the choice or the parent making the choice on testing?
So under 18, the parent will make that choice. If the student is 18 or older, they will have the same option as the staff, whether they want to participate or not.
So to clarify my question, if a parent, does a parent have to opt-in for the testing or opt-out?
So, no, they don't have to opt-out, per se. They really just have to consent, sign a consent. If they do not sign a consent, we do not pool test that child. You know, I, what I think happens in, just in the meetings that I've had with other district nurse leaders, and I've been, you know, on several webinars, I think the first, people just kind of wait, wait a week or two, and they think, you know, how is this going to work? I don't know if it's the fear of getting tested. I'm hoping that, you know, the, how easy it is now is really what's going to make them, you know, make the decision to do it. And if they decide not to, then those students just don't get tested. But it's, the higher the amount is obviously better.
Thank you, next question, Mrs. Forbes.
Amy, could you just explain to me what the Abbott Binex Now antigen test is?
Yep, basically, it's a rapid, so.
nasal swab?
It's a nasal swab, yep. So the difference between a, an antigen and a PCR is basically what it detects at the lab. Whether it's, you know, proteins, you know, or genetic material, or it's just, that's what happens in the lab.
Okay.
When it says antigen, that means you're going to get results in 15 minutes.
Beautiful, thank you.
Next question.
Amy, thank you. I know your nursing staff has done an amazing job here this year. I guess my question for you is whether you have spoken to other districts that are already doing pool testing, and would it be beneficial for us to look at using some of that, I guess the Easter Two money, to look at a nurse's assistant? Because I do think it's a little more cumbersome once you get into the pool testing.
So to that end, if I might add, I've been able to free Amy up Monday through Wednesday and bring in someone that we have right now on staff. But we also have an add-out to complete the year when that individual goes back. That individual right now is free because they're a one-on-one nurse for a student who just had surgery, and therefore, we will use that person under Amy's guidance. Amy will be free Monday through Wednesday because exactly what you said, there's a lot, you really need a district coordinator, and who better than Amy to be able to lead that? And then we've advertised potentially the rest of the year because we see this expanding to the other two schools. So thank you for asking that, because I was going to mention that.
And just one more question. Is there a, is there a number where pool testing is really not viable? So if we only have 20% of our kids being tested, is that really going to tell us much?
Right. So yeah, that's a good question, and I think the aim is 50% or higher. That's, and that's, you know, not really so much in writing, but I had meetings with other district nurses and district COVID pool testing coordinators, and they have, the thing is, it's ruled out differently too, in different towns and districts, and depending on how large the district is, you know, it depends on how they roll it out. We're, we're rolling it out, or the, the, the plan is to roll it out all in one day instead of breaking it up into different types of times of the week. But to answer your question, the, the, the number that I'm getting is over 50% is, you know, that's a pretty good start. And in, of note, I will say that other districts say we started off with 50, but now we're up to 85. Like I said, it's just people that kind of want to see how it goes.
Yeah, and I agree with you. I think when people find out you're not reaching up for the brain anymore, that more kids are going to be able to do it.
Yeah, and you know, I think, you know, when we're thinking about why we're doing it, and, and it's not to exclude students, it's not, but it's rather the opposite. It's to get as many kids in school as we can and to make sure we're not missing anything. And that's just, you know, just an extra step. Masks, social distancing, pool testing, you know, all of that stuff, you know, will help, help us open safely.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Yes.
What's the timeline for building to have to do all this testing? Like, how intrusive to instruction is it going to be?
So that's why I would like to do it first thing right in the morning with Clara Barton. Because they can self-administer, we could be fairly quick with that building. Then we'd go to, you know, Chafee. If there's two of us and there's 20 kids, I mean, what I'm hearing from other district nurse leaders is that you're really spending three to five seconds on each kid. The, the tough thing is, you know, when we're self-administering, we're changing the gloves often, and, you know, so that, that takes a little bit of time. But I can't, until we roll out a trial, it's hard to, and timing is going to be one of the things that is important to us because we want to make sure it's as least intrusive to the learning environment as possible. So if we can do it, you know, during a time where maybe they have a little break at this time, and the principals are going to give us some more, you know, direction tomorrow in terms of what time is best. Morning is the best, is in terms of getting those results back in a timely manner and making sure we, you know, we reflex test as soon as we get those results. Because then, like Dr. Nash mentioned, we're not contact tracing for three days. It's just, you know, the look back is only, you know, a couple days, maybe even one. Some of the, you know, people are saying, the other nurses in the other districts are saying sometimes we get the results in 24 hours, so. sometimes we get the, uh, results in 24 hours, so.
And the, so the self-administering of it, they just do it, put it in a bag, or?
So, um, we have a, um, we have several of the, um, packaged swabs. And then there is a large, it's almost like a large test tube, like a jumbo test tube. Um, you know, so we'd have, uh, 10 students, because there's a, a max of 10 in each, uh, tube. Um, they would do it and stick it, um, boogers down is what the little kid says in the, you know. So, uh, you know, it's really, um, you know, their way of just kind of really talking to a second, third grader. They just put it right down in the, um, tube as we walk by, and, um, and that's it. Sanitize their hands and they're back to learning.
And maybe this is a question that I should know, although we're not quite at this level at my district yet. So when they all go into the tube, is there any identification on them, or it's just random? It's pool?
No, so they're all loose, loose swabs. The only ones that know the, um, names of the swabs, I mean, the names of the students in that tube are, uh, the nurse and me.
No, that's what I'm saying, so you have, you know who's in that.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So if we separate, if the class is 20 students, um, you know, it's, it's going to be two, you know, two tubes. And, um, you know, we will have it, um, documented electronically, and that's a, it's a, um, you know, electronic system, uh, Project Beacon, which we're, we're getting to know. And, um, once that comes back positive, then we will individually test. And then we, obviously, we know the names of, of each, uh, student.
All right, could I, and I could ask, sorry, I know I keep asking. What is the, what is our overarching goal with pool testing? I mean, I know the state is going to continue to throw this at us and that at. What is, what is our overall arching goal for pool testing? What are we hoping to get out of this?
Well, we're hoping to minimize spread in, in the, in the school. So what it is going to detect is asymptomatic positive students, um, which is the biggest percentage. I mean, the, the students, those ages are walking around asymptomatic. Um, so if we can identify one, and, and when we, when we think about getting the students back and we're going to be caught, uh, you know, um, contact tracing for those students, it's a lot easier when you're identifying a positive person as quick as possible. And if we're doing it weekly, you're identifying somebody that one week was negative and then the next week was positive. Um, so it's, uh, you know, it's basically mitigating spread, just another layer of it though. It's, it's not the end-all, be-all, um, and, and that's, you know, what we were, we were concerned at first about, you know, should we do this? And, you know, back in, in January, and some of the things didn't quite make sense. You know, why would we do this if we're still keeping all these kids out of school? So now we can identify a positive case and not have to, um, you know, quarantine an entire 10, you know, test tube swabs, you know, that if one came back positive two months ago, and they said if one comes back positive, that whole tube had to quarantine until we, you know, found the test, the, the positive student. So it's just another layer. It's, it's, the idea is capturing a positive student before the spread.
Right, but potentially they could have, could already be spreading, because it's going to be a 48-hour turnaround. So there already could be the spread happening.
Right, well, yeah, but it's a lot better than it being spread for 10 days.
Correct, so I, it sounds like it's more for the asymptomatic, right? Because of.
Oh, it is for asymptomatic, and that's the whole idea behind it. Um, if, if, you know, we're still going to continue with the, if, if your child is not feeling well, they need to.
Stay home.
Stay home. Uh, that's, that's not going to change. If, if, just because we're doing some pool testing now doesn't mean, you know, come in sick for staff or send your child in sick.
Right.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Griffin?
So I've been in a school district that's been using COVID testing for, oh, I don't know how many months now, but it's at least, I feel like since October, all staff. And then we went to pool testing for students, I want to say about three or four weeks ago, except, um, the students self-administer, but it happens at home. And that's one thing that I would like to advocate for, if it does happen in Oxford, that the kits are sent home either the weekend bef, like, the week before, on like a Thursday. Parents have it, they know they have to have their child take it on Monday morning before they come to school. And then they're all in individual boxes, and then the nurse organizes it. Each kid has a QR code, they scan it, so it goes right into the system. But then there's no, you know, extra layer of PPE that you have to keep stripping on and off, on and off, in front of each individual kid. You're just collecting their samples. And I think it's a much more hygienic, safe way to do it, as opposed to going to each and every classroom and having kids unmask and whatnot. So that's just one suggestion.
You're not allowed to do that?
Say it again?
You're not allowed to do that. Number 48, can schools use unobserved self-swab for home collection for pool testing? And the answer is no. At this time, the state's pool testing program will not support students or staff self-administering it unobserved at home.
So that's if it's the state program?
Yes, well, that's what we're, we're running. But that's, I, I think all of these three, um, groups that are part of this are vendors that on the outside, probably your district is using, and they would advise you the same way. This didn't come from DESI, this came from CIC, Project Beacon, and Ginkgo, all the three. And they advise the same, obviously, you know, being able to witness it, so they're doing it correctly or they're not doing it to someone else, I guess.
Right, right.
Um, can I just add too? That, that did come up with the, um, the, the district nurse leader and the COVID pool testing coordinators, um, met last, um, Monday. And that did come up, and one of the, um, district, uh, nurses had mentioned the amount of inconclusive tests, uh, test tubes that came back. So an entire tube would come back inconclusive, um, because perhaps it was administered wrong. Um, so, you know, that's, that is, then we'd have to go and do it, redo it. Um, so, you know, we might have to be duplicating efforts if we allow them to do that at home, even if we could, even if it was supported.
That's news to me, because, you know, I just know, seeing the organization and seeing how it happens, um, it's a very elaborate process, and it takes a lot of work behind the scenes for our nurses to make it work in the district that I'm in. Um, I can't imagine going into each and every classroom and, and administering all those tests. Like, God bless you for, for that initiative. But, um, it also makes me a little nervous having, um, I guess I would, I'd want to see, you know, how that works out and how the kids are separated. Are they taken into the hall away from other children? Or do they wash their hands before and after, and all sorts of things, so.
Yeah, yeah, and those are things that, um, you know, again, with a trial run, but the idea is, uh, sanitize or wash before or after, before and after. Um, and the goal is to keep them at their desks and just have us come in and, and, and go through the class. I, I would rather them not, um, up in, in clumps or forming lines in the hallway. It's easy enough to keep them at their desks and just have us kind of, um, go right through. And from what I hear, um, you know, some people do it in the hallway, and it's, and it works out fine for them. I am just picturing, um, first graders and getting them out of their desks and into the hall and in line, and then doing it, and then back in their desk, making sure they sanitized. And I just feel like it's much more controlled, them just sitting and us going through. But again, we, we, you know, after the trial, we don't know what we don't know yet, um, in terms of what's going to come up, and we're going to think, oh, I didn't even think of that. So, um, the trial runs, and it'll be good to, um, do the trial run while we're still hybrid. So, you know, it's, it's, we can see, all right, this is what it's going to be like, but only double that.
Very good. Thank you, Amy. Dr. Nash, everything on staff?
Not on pool testing.
Okay.
So the, um, next piece of this is the parent and staff reentry survey results that you have in your packet. Before we sent out, or as part of that, I also included the February 25th letter uh, that was sent out, um, to parents, uh, along with, uh, the survey. So they had, obviously, an understanding of why we were asking them these questions.
Um, so instead of going through every piece.
I'm not going to unless someone has a question.
We all had a chance to review the survey. Are there any questions on the survey, specific to the survey? I'll give you a minute to, if you have something that popped up. And I'm just, in, in reading the comments, and I do appreciate a lot in those comments. And some of the main comments that popped up, yes, we have, and I don't know if Amy, if you're still here or not, to answer this question, the common ones, was why bring students back to school when we, when we get a letter every day that there's a positive case? However, in reading those letters, I just read the little section every day, the student was in school and not in school. When was the last time we had a transmission in school, or a student was in school, to your, that, to your best recollection?
Um, well, we've only had one. We only had, uh, one in-school transmitted, and it was staff to staff.
Staff to staff, right.
I'm so, you know, when reading that, and, you know, and parents make their choice, how they, how they feel they want to do this, and there's torn comments going either way. But I think the program and the time put into this, especially if people ask about why, why just don't wait for next year? Every day counts at school. If we can get through this and we can get, and we get a system that is working, I think that's positive all the way around.
Let's ask Mr. Chair while Amy's back up, this kind of segues into that. Um, you know, I think we all know that we've done an amazing job with the six-foot spacing. Um, and under the close contact guidelines, you have to be six feet or, uh, under for more than 10 minutes to be a close contact, correct? Amy, do you, is that a state, is that State Department of, uh, the Health Department, or is that CDC? Because obviously, as a principal, one of my concerns is, and our district, is that if that guideline does not get lowered or relaxed, so to speak, to three feet, that the transmission is going to happen a little bit more, and that there's going to be a lot more close contact tracing that needs to be done, hence a lot of kids being quarantined.
Uh, yeah, so the, the six feet is the CDC's, um, the ideal six feet. But it wa, it, for DESI, for us to reopen schools, it was between three, no less than three, uh, and, uh, six feet. And we decided six feet, because to reopen, that was just the safest bet. Um, but, you know, my guess is we're going down to three feet. Uh, I, because otherwise, how are you fitting, uh, them in there? And that's just going to be, like you said, more contact tracing. Um, which, you know, that's part of, that's part of our duties now, that's just what we do. Um, so, yeah, it's going to be more contact tracing efforts, which is, um, part of why, um, you know, I am kind of removing myself from my desk right now and, and focusing on, um, the pool testing and the COVID piece. And once we do get back, um, you know, yeah, there's going to be more contact tracing. There, there may be more, um, in-school transmission, may, maybe, maybe not. I don't, I can't say one way or the other. Um, but just to piggyback on, um, Mr. Coonan, um, you know, why not wait until next year? When people say that, I agree with you, every day is a day missed in school. And what happens when we start school with everybody in it, whether it's now or three weeks or the start of next year, there's always that angst and that, um, the fear of what are we going to do? But once we're there, we think, okay, this worked, what didn't work? And then you can work out the kinks when school starts in the fall. But right now, I mean, um, getting, I think, the biggest, um, pushes is getting people in, in their seats, um, learning. And there's no other way to do it besides to, to cut that six feet down.
I think it was interesting, because in the parent survey, 78, almost 80% said they would send them back without pool testing. And it went down a little bit, and partly, probably because they didn't know. But I think one of the things that we tried to point out in the letter that went out in February, uh, it, with regard to the CDC guidelines that came out in, uh, February 8th or 11th, they put, they had a year of data now that showed that only 5% to 10% of our kids in schools are receiving transmission. They didn't have that a year ago. So I think that, that's a big piece. We didn't have vaccine a year ago, we didn't have pool testing. So I think those are things that we don't know. We're thinking that we're going to be a lot safer. We may not have transmission in school at three feet. Um, WHO and Massachusetts Pediatric Association, none of them supported six feet. We chose to do that, but we could have done three feet. And there are some school districts, they're saying, I don't have the, the data, that have been at three feet since day one. And again, we see transmission is not significant. Uh, we're living testimony. We've had transmission in school was adult to adult. The one case we had since we opened in October was adult to adult.
So, just to follow up then, I, I totally, 1,000% understand the three to six feet guidance that DESI first put out. I understand that. What I'm talking about is the close contact tracing guidelines. They're at six feet, there's no three to six feet there, they're at six feet. So I guess what I'm asking, is that DESI-driven? Is that from the Department of Health, our Health Department, or is that CDC? That's the only question I had. I totally understand, yeah, we can go down to three feet, we're going to have to to get more kids into classrooms. You're not going to be able to stay six feet apart. Where does that come from?
The CDC and Mass DPH, Department of Public Health, um, they define close contact. And the definition that they have defined it as is within six feet for 15 minutes or longer over a 24-hour period. So that is CDC and the, uh, Mass Department of Health.
Has there been any contact, have you had, uh, been in any meetings or any discussions that they're talking about uh, for schools, lessening that to three feet? Because that would really make things, um, you know, smoother, especially when there's not a lot of transmission going on according to all the data.
Uh, so they, there has not been, uh, and, and we're on, um, Mass DPH calls every week, um, and CDC as well every week. And, um, there has been nothing that is, uh, discussing right now. But I will say, CDC and you, sometimes on these Mass DPH calls, um, you know, the schools come up for about three minutes, and, um, you know, and, and that's that. So I really think it's going to, I do think there's going to be some guidance that changes. I don't know if that's going to be, um, you know, it, would I like to see that? Yeah, maybe, but I, we don't mind, um, you know, tracing, whatever's going to be the safest and, and stop the spread. Um, if it's still six feet, then, you know, it's just going to be that much more tracing. But the CDC, to answer your question, that's the CDC and Mass DPH.
Thank you, Amy.
Hopefully, we'll have something this week from the commissioner on, uh, maybe more evidence as to why three feet work. He may not do anything that's going to change that, obviously, he can't, but he may provide us with more guidance.
Thank you. Anything else for Mrs. Griffin? Yes, Cora.
I have a question, Dr. Nash, about the survey, um, for the staff survey, which buildings was this sent to?
All.
Who sent to all buildings?
It was all staff.
Okay.
Thank you again, Mrs. Griffin, have a good night, have a nice night.
Have a good night.
You too.
And then the final piece of this, and I won't go over it with you, but you can see that, um, it's about a six-week planning period that we've started already. We're actually in week three, and Amy talked about the fact that we'll be meeting, uh, this week with the elementary principals and others to have that discussion about, uh, pool testing. But, um, we're really into this. I know that, uh, Justin, uh, today received some requests, uh, for 100 desks that we're going to need at Barton. And I know that, uh, Mr. P had talked with me last week about, um, tables and cafeteria. So we anticipate that we'll be using, um, the funds that need to be used first, that we got from the state, out of the state coronavirus prevention fund program. We recall, I mentioned that we have $85,000 that has to be spent by June. So before we go back to take anything out of ESA One, we need to spend that money. And so, uh, any of those needs that we have, we'll take out of that, whether it's personnel or, um, material supplies, you know, equipment, whatever, so.
Thank you. Time to go.
Um, just a quick question, Dr. Nash. We used to have enough desks for all the students, right? And, um, we, as far as desks for students?
Yeah.
I'm just a little confused as to how we used to have enough desks for all the students.
Uh, the aunt room, for example, in Barton, used to have tables, so we're going to put desks in there. And also, his plan for feeding students is to put desks in the cafeteria. So that's why he needs those.
Additional desks, not the classroom?
And he said that they will be helpful next year. Mr. P's plan's a little different, he's all set.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
I just want to say, like, in full review of the in-person reentry survey for staff,
I just want to say, like, in full review of the in-person reentry survey for staff, looking through it, I want to share that I have a lot of the same common sentiments that I personally feel as an educator. I know with the Commissioner of Education's announcement, kind of his little executive order there that mandates everybody to kind of make this leap of faith. It's scary for everybody involved. I think it's scary for parents. I know it's scary for teachers. I feel that as an educator. You know, I trust Dr. Nash immensely with our district and our students' well-being and our teachers' well-being. But making changes like this is never easy for anybody. I'm personally struggling with it, you know, where I work as a professional. And I just want to let our teachers know that I did read their comments and I have, you know, I had the same sentiments myself. I saw a lot of comments in here that I would have written myself personally about the closing space and having kids closer. You know, it sends, I think, fear in all of us, even as parents. You know, we want to do what's best for our kids. And it makes us nervous making this leap again. But from what I keep hearing, the, you know, the medical professionals keep saying that there's low transmission and it's it's supposed to be safe. And so, again, we just kind of have to do our best. And I applaud you, Dr. Nash and Mrs. Grunat, for, you know, doing the pool testing and getting that in place as another mitigation strategy. I know everybody's been, you know, sanitizing and doing all the right things by our kids. And so basically, what I wanted to say is it's not easy to take these these big steps. But it will hopefully benefit the kids immensely for their mental health and more time on learning. So, and I thank our teachers for for the sacrifice and our administrators and everybody that works on the team to support our schools. Because it's an immense sacrifice. This year has been a sacrifice like no other. And it's not like anybody got anything extra for going above and beyond. It just kind of came with the territory. So I will forever be grateful for what everybody's done here, you know, from our teachers to our custodians to, you know, our cafeteria staff, to everybody. Because so much extra work. And we've had such a great year so far, so.
Thank you, Mrs. Grunat. Mrs. Forbes, do you have a comment?
I just had a quick question. I heard there's going to be a Q and A session for parents tomorrow at 5 o'clock. Where could I find a link or am I not able? I don't have a K through four-year-old, but I'd be curious to sit in and listen to them.
May Helen, I think, was working to set up the link, Helen, for tomorrow?
Yes.
Is that?
I'll send, I can send the link to the school committee.
Where is it currently for a parent who wants to?
It's a link for the K through four parents who got the letter. The link is embedded in their letter.
Okay.
So for anybody who is not a K through four parent and who would still like to participate, I can certainly put the link on the homepage of the website.
Okay.
That'd be great.
That'd be great.
Thank you.
We anticipate doing, because I'm sure we're going to evolve over a period of time. And when we get to the middle of school, we'll have a Q and A that will be, you know, fine tuned.
Anything else for Dr. Nash? All right, move on to Mrs. Griffin. You have the report for us.
I do. I have a warrant report for this evening for March 8th, 2021. So I signed an accounts payable warrant on March 2nd, 2021 for $31,502.26. A food service warrant for March 2nd, 2021 for $5,951.65. A payroll warrant dated March 4th, 2021 for $558,018.10. And an accounts payable warrant for March 9th, 2021 for $18,480.45. And that's all.
Thank you. Mrs. Forbes, let's start. You tonight's member request?
Well, I just wanted to thank my fellow committee members for all of the extra work that they're doing. Mrs. Griffin and Mr. Burke and Mr. Cronacioli. I'm currently not working on my subcommittee, so I do appreciate all the extra time, especially when you're doing so much. Also thankful for our nurses, for Mrs. Grunat and Mrs. Shomer and the other nurses who are working harder. But I am hopeful that this is going to go over well as we've done so well with all of our other COVID precautions and having our students in school at least half the time. I am hopeful and full of faith that it's going to work out. So thank you to everyone who's worked so hard on all of these plans. That's it for me.
Thank you.
Just the sentiments I had before, to echo them, I just I'm very grateful to everybody and all their hard work. It's not easy and it's it's just amazing. So that's pretty much it. I don't really have any other comments for this evening, except one more comes to mind. Commander Maisely, again, the dedication of the field, hopefully for a future agenda. We can, I think Helen shared with me, we had already made a motion to approve the scoreboard. So we have, you know, put funds aside for that. I think, I don't know if Mr. Ladoo can kind of clarify that, if this is the appropriate time or maybe another time.
I have to briefly note, also, I believe as part of those funds, wasn't the family raising money as well for some of the funds?
I think it might have been asked of the family. I don't know if that was necessarily something that the family agreed to or not. However, I know the family has waited, oh, my goodness, three, four years now for this dedication to occur. And I would just love to see it happen at graduation. Because it would be a time, again, where there would be a class present that had Commander Maisely before they move on. And then there would not be students that had the pleasure of working with him. And it would just, I think, be a great way to pay him tribute for the service that he gave the Oxford Public Schools, which was immense. So that's all.
Well deserved. Thank you. Mr. Burke?
I just want to echo something Pal said earlier that I think this is probably the third time this year we're asking our teaching staff, our administration, to just completely shift what they're doing. And I know how tremendously difficult that is. And I just want to say that we support them. We appreciate everything that they have done to this point and going forward to get us through this wonderful year.
Just to the subcommittee, I should have mentioned your names, but Debbie, Michelle, Shelley, Val and Dr. Nash at our last meeting, you know, they they are the backbone. And when Pal's there, she helps us. We do have some other members that we, you know, have, for certain reasons, haven't been able to come. But these are the steady eddies, so to speak. So I just wanted to give them a shout out and a thank you. I also know, let me preface this conversation by saying that I know CDC and I know the president and I know others have said it's not mandatory for teachers to be vaccinated to get back into school. But if we want to talk about putting mitigation strategies in place and all those things have been working, to Pal's point earlier, if we can offer the opportunity for all staff members in this district to be vaccinated, that would certainly help a lot. So I guess my question, and then I can get an answer maybe later, is where are we at with this town? What conversations have we had with those that are in charge of the rollout of vaccinations in this town? And are our staff members on a list yet? Are we on the radar? I don't know if that can be answered now or?
Dr. Nash, go ahead.
I can. The Director of Public Health, Alison Novak, emailed myself and Amy last Thursday with the potential that she was working with Harrington Memorial Hospital to identify slots. I asked her, was that certain? Do we have an idea of how many slots? And she has indicated that she would need to find that information out. The earliest that they would be available, I believe, not sure if Amy is still here, was March 22nd. So we had hoped that we could potentially send something out to staff. But knowing that the vaccine opens up this week, I certainly didn't want to have people not search for appointments until we were able to confirm that this could happen. But it may very well happen and we just do not have any certainty yet. And the earliest it would happen, it appears in my conversation with her via email, is March, mid-March.
And I just want to repeat what Dr. Nash said. We don't want to give anyone any false hope. Is because you're talking awful for a district to be able to have, to be able to pull that many spots in is would be very, very remarkable. Where there is a limited number out there. And my suggestion, even my own district, I did get an email saying I was put on the list. I heard back in about a week and a half or so with that. And I did was able to secure my own appointment. Actually, my wife did. You know, it is requiring, you get up early and CVS tends to open up in the morning for some spots and that you really have to, I think staff should explore our options. If for certain reasons, if it does, that's great. That's gravy on top. But I don't know where how the town has been, especially when it's going to the mass vaccination sites. I know in my own personal case, my mom was able to get through the senior center to be able to book appointments. But it was, oh, you happened to be here at the right type, right place, the right time. And we hear the struggles all throughout, all throughout Massachusetts. People just, you know, there's still people 75 out there that have trouble getting an appointment. So it's, I believe that there's a good effort, but it's just the supply is so limited. You know, that where other states have been so successful is bringing it to the people, is to be able to set up a remote station, remote stations. And schools have offered. And I'm sure we have no problem here. At this school, we do carbuncle, we have enough place to be able to do it. But it's just not, it's not an option right now in our state.
Superintendent's Association offered to DESI to set up central locations across the state, primarily using voc tech schools. That was denied by those medical providers who were leading this. I'm assuming whoever the medical experts advising the governor at that point in time, they said politely, no, thank you. We'll handle this ourselves. Now, prior to even our conversation with our Director of Public Health, Amy was working behind the scenes with CVS to see whether we could capture something. And when, of course, all of this kind of came to pass, that teachers were being moved up, I know that she had been in contact, oh, at least three or four times, talking with mid-management to see. And I think it's just about vaccine availability, you know, just trying to make sure. So we, you know, we're trying on both ends. I would think that we might be more successful through our Director of Public Health. I'm just not sure how many slots they actually will have at Harrington Hospital, Memorial Hospital. She wasn't able to tell me, so I really don't know. So that's why we did not want to put something out to our staff.
And especially divided up not just in Oxford, I think entire region.
Yeah, I'll set.
You all set? Okay. And finally.
Yes. I just wanted to let you know that our student representative, Ashley McGowan, is on now. If you'd like to give her some time.
Yeah, sure. I will, actually, I'll yield the floor to Ashley right now. Ashley, thank you and welcome.
Thank you. I just have a quick report. For Student Council, we're holding March Madness brackets and we're sending those out to students and staffs where they can vote on just kind of fun things like their favorite cereal. Or next, we're going to be doing favorite Disney movies, just to get a competition going, to see whose favorites persist. And the cereal bracket will be closing soon and we'll have a winner. And also, the first volleyball match of the Fall Two season is this Wednesday versus Milbury. And the first football game is away versus Quabog on either March 19th or the 20th. And we wish both teams good luck. That's all I have for you today.
Thank you, Ms. McGowan. Okay, and I'll just finish up my requests. And it is, as we get into the election season, and I think I've publicly said before, I will not be running again. I'm a huge fan and proponent of term limits. I've done three terms. I did three terms as Board of Slockman. It's time to step aside, let someone else come in, new ideas. You get a little set in your ways and it's time to shake it up a little bit. And I've done three years from here. And so there are part of me that looked at separate options and I said, well, what's your philosophy? At least take a year to two years away for myself and let someone else step in. Particularly, I feel I can still do the job, but particularly I want to open up and get different ideas into the town. Maybe there's a parent sitting out there right now that's doing the surveys that's very frustrated. Says, what does the school board do? What do they do? Give me a call. I'd be more than happy to talk to you about it. I'd sign your papers. Papers are available. I would have, I can sign as many papers as you want. And yes, I will. I'd love to, I don't know if we can do a phone call, we can meet, virtual meet, whatever, and go through what entails to be an elected representative of this community. And I think it's a privilege and honor. And I was very happy that I was elected so many times. And that's all I have. At this point, I will open the floor up to public comment. Floor is open. Please identify yourself and unmute. One more few more seconds. And I shall close the floor. Very good. Okay, our next meeting will be Monday, March 22nd. And at that point, we'll also have the Fiscal Year 22 Public Hearing on School Choice in the Budget. Yes?
Do we, do we request topics of discussion? I know we have an executive session that I don't know if we've had any follow-up in quite some time regarding an issue. Is that something I bring up, the public format? Is that something we can put on for an executive session discussion?
Yeah, you're not for an executive session.
All right.
Yes, we just, Mr. Chairman, we just received an update late Friday on that matter and the agenda had already been posted. So it was my intent to include that on the next agenda.
Okay, could you forward me that? Forward me that, please.
Thank you, Helen.
Thank you. Okay, very good. Thank you. Want to wear that? All right, anything else, topics of future agenda? No, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. No, move in second. Move in second. All right, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned. Thank you and have a great night.